Hey Dan, can you talk for us?
Yes. Yep. Can you hear me? Okay. How's that?
You sound great.
Great. We can do you guys.
We're ready when you are, Chair.
We'd like to welcome everyone out to the business section, uh, session of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission meeting for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, first of all, just to ask if any of the planning commissioners have any ex parte communications or conflicts of in- interests that need to be disclosed. And I'm gonna assume none. So we will go straight to general public comments and I can't see the room, but, uh, do we have anyone in the room present or on Zoom?
Nobody in the room.
Nobody on Zoom.
We should have told them it was full.
Hang on, let me make sure there's. Yeah, there's nobody on. No, nobody's here.
All right. Well, we are excited about what we're doing tonight, and I'm sure somebody will listen to the recording. So, uh, we will forego the, uh, general public comments. We have just one, a business item, uh, to take care of, and we have, uh, approval of Planning Commission minutes. They're listed on consent agenda, and I'm going to make the motion that we remove them from consent agenda because uh, we understand from our work session that there are some edits to the, some editorial changes are being made to the minutes. Is there a second to the motion to move the approval of the Planning Commission minutes from March eighth off of the consent agenda?
What staff would recommend, you can definitely do it that way. Staff would recommend that they still be approved just with those changes and any others that need to be made, but it, it's up to the commission. That's just, we recommend you do it.
Yeah, by, by definition, if they're on consent, then they're not up for any kind of
Oh.
editorialization. So that's, that's the reason for doing it that way. So.
Second.
Just the Roberts rule. Sorry, Sam. So, uh, okay, we got a second. All those in favor, uh, sorry.
Commissioner Mills, it's been moved and seconded loudly by Commissioner Shelton.
Great. Sorry, I'm in DC. This Roberts rule stuff gets real serious around here. So must be rubbing off on me. I'm too close to the Potomac. We've got a motion and second. All those in favor of moving them off of consent, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for, uh, indulging me on that. Uh, with that, we have, uh, one business item. Project ZTA dash two, three, dash zero, zero, one. And for the public, this is a public hearing and possible recommendations on a city-initiated zoning text amendment to make minor updates to portions of Title Five, eleven, twelve, fourteen, and nineteen. The purpose of this text amendment is to clarify ambiguous, uh, ambiguous definitions and procedures and rectify conflicting provisions as part of general code maintenance. So, uh, just for the public, this is, this is housekeeping and clarification. So it will help make sure that, uh, we all understand uh, what, what the intent of the code is. So with that, uh, we'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, I'm gonna move up here so you can at least kind of see me on Zoom. If I turn. Okay, um, let me share my screen. So we're gonna shift gears again back from the kind of conceptual yard element discussion to actual proposed changes that are in front of us tonight. Um, these different changes come mostly from zoning interpretations that have just been backlogged. Some of them also are just areas of the code that needed clarification, but, but most of them are based on those interpretations. Um, and I'm just gonna go through each one here. I felt like it was probably easiest for everyone to see if we just go through the memo itself so that the red lines, um, are, are easily pulled up. So the first one here, um, is a change, proposed change to our business licensing and regulation title, Title Five. Um, in alcohol licensing regulations, there's a requirement that an establishment serving alcohol is is required to be a certain distance away from public locations. That's things like schools, churches, libraries, playgrounds, parks. Um, and this distance is specified as being measured from the nearest entrance of the proposed outlet, but a definition just isn't given for what that means. So we have a proposed definition here of entrance of outlet, meaning any entrance into the structure or unit space for which the license is being applied for. Um, that's, I think procedurally, what's been used for a lot of years in business licensing, but does anyone have questions or comments on this one?
Have a question. Is that a straight line distance or is that a walking distance?
That's a good question. I think later in that same section, it actually specifies that. I don't work with the business licensing title very much, but Mike, do you know that?
Yeah, it, it depends, is the answer. There's, these definitions are they're in the alcohol ordinances of, of the state code. They're in the tobacco ordinance of the state code. And different things are measured differently. Uh, if you're measuring to like a community center or residential area, you measure one way. You might measure a straight line distance another way. So it depends. It's all detailed on the state code though, which this does refer back to.
Is this also just strictly for public entrance or is this also staffing entrance as well?
I think that's a good question. I mean, the way it's written here is any entrance into the structure or unit space, um, but certainly open to feedback if that needs to be further specified.
I, I think we probably need to specify that just because there could be, you know, private entrance for staffing
Sure.
that could be closer, that could then disqualify or qualify.
So it sounds like what you're recommending is to say means any public entrance into the structure. Is that correct? Um, great. Any other discussion on this one? Sounds kind of easy. Sounds probably the most simple, so we're gonna.
I make a quick note. What I might recommend, if this does get voted on, is to just recommend it with, with something to the effect of make sure it's consistent with whatever state code says, because I don't want to say something here that's inconsistent with state code.
Sure. We got a nod.
That's great.
Okay, moving on to our next one. So this is paved surface. So, um, paved surface comes into play in Titles Eleven, which is vehicles and traffic, Title Twelve, which is subdivisions, and Title Nineteen, which is our friendly zoning ordinance. Um, so city code specifies that what we call controlled vehicles, which are recreational vehicles, RVs, commercial vehicles, agricultural vehicles, trailers, et cetera, must be stored on a paved surface. But city code doesn't specify on whether non-controlled vehicles, like a passenger vehicle, should also be stored on a paved surface. Um, and so there's, there's some inconsistencies there, and the question comes up of like, does all parking need to be on a paved surface? Um, what does that look like? So we've just recommended that a definition be added to Titles Eleven, Twelve, and Nineteen for what paved surface means, um, as well as a few regulations. So the definition reads as paved surface means an improved surface generally utilized for parking or access covered by asphalt, concrete, or other hard surface materials as approved by the Development Review Committee. Paved surface specifically excludes dry gravel and similar materials as a finished product, but allows for the use of permeable pavement as approved by the Development Review Committee. Um, and then there's a few regulations. So in Title Eleven, we've added in a proposed item D that just says parking areas shall consist of those paved materials defined. Um, in Title Twelve, we've incorporated again that same definition with a regulation in the pavement requirements section that says pavement for parking areas shall consist of those paved materials defined under paved surface. And then in Title Nineteen, um, we have here, Title Nineteen actually currently does say parking area shall consist of concrete, asphalt, or other impervious materials. But we've recommended updating that slightly just to be consistent with what we're recommending in eleven and twelve, so that it says, um, first of all, that same definition that we just went through, and then parking area shall consist of those paved materials defined under paved surface. So we're just trying to have consistency between all three titles. Um, and, and just clarifying that. So what are your thoughts on this item?
This is probably not really the topic here, but, um, what, what is the idea behind, for instance, if I live in a rural whatever the, our, our designation is, and I have a tractor, I have to park my tractor on pavement.
Yeah, that's what the code reads us today.
Why?
Um, I don't know if it could be like a runoff issue with like oil permeating the ground. So you would want to have an impermeable material. Um, if it would be just like for durability with a heavier vehicle, um, planners or other commissioners feel free to weigh in, but that would be my guess.
But you did say now we're gonna include permeable materials being appropriate. So the permeability of it doesn't seem to be the question.
We're putting in the permeable one as approved by the Development Review Committee. So in situations where we think that would work, just to have a little more flexibility for groundwater purposes, but, um, Mike, I don't know if you have thoughts on why it was originally written that way?
I, I don't know exactly. Came from code enforcement years ago. My understanding was it had to do with with, um, fluids and things like that leaking out of vehicles, and I don't know if there were issues that prompted that. So the answer is I don't fully know, but, but I do think that, um, it had something to do at least with the discharge of, of fluids and cars parked on grass, and that's not good, but.
If there's a concern, I, I think I'm understanding of like, if we're, if we're not saying permeable materials could be used, does that create an issue with discharge going in? Um, we could add language, maybe that says like with the insurance that materials will be managed to not leak, um, or, or something of that ilk. We just didn't want to miss an opportunity to allow permeable pavers where they're a good solution. Um, but we don't have to if it's not.
I think this actually creates more flexibility than the code today.
Yeah, my question is really on the other side of.
Oh.
It at least allows some discretion and, and just a, you know, a minor review, and if there's a good solution, great.
Trying to create, yeah, a little bit more flexibility, especially because we've recommended permeable pavers from a sustainability standpoint in other situations. Um, but again, trying to create consistency between the different titles, so.
These are, these are important discussions to have. I mean, we, um, we're seeing, um, across from the gear room. Um, you know, especially this year pooled water and cars leaking stuff into whatever's there. Um, you know, and that, I don't know that this particularly addresses that, but we've got more vehicles in Cottonwood Heights than we've ever had, and that's not, not gonna stop. So I, I, I'm grateful we're having the discussion about uh, what these surfaces, uh, how these surfaces are managed.
I think the, the one-off car here and there has not historically been an issue, but I know there have been instances where code enforcement's called out and there's seven vehicles parked on grass and, you know, it there are other nuisances going on. So again, I think it stems from some of those. You know, maybe some worst-case scenarios prompting ordinance changes where most people aren't pushing the limits of the code, but again, that's a guess at where that all came from.
It's also, it's been an issue with people trying to use just dry gravel and then having it create like a nuisance with dust when vehicles drive on it. If it's like an unfinished, just gravel dump down, not, uh, dust or noise. Um, and then just from a, like a purely staff standpoint, uh, because there isn't currently consistency between the three, sometimes we receive pushback from people being like, what doesn't call it out in this title, so I should be allowed. So that's the kind of impetus for why it's here.
Like I said, probably not the place for it, but for me, you know, let's say I have a trailer with no fluids.
Perfect.
Yeah.
What's the reason to not park it on a permeable?
Yeah, so if, I mean,
This is no reason.
If we want to go that other direction where we, in doing this, loosen up options for controlled vehicles, definitely something we can look at. We, as staff, didn't touch that part of it in this, but we'd be happy to look into it if we're directed to. Okay, I'm gonna scroll to the next one. And for our friends on Zoom, just feel free to like jump in and stop me if you have anything. It's hard to read body language on Zoom. Um, okay, I'm gonna actually let Mike cover this one. This is proposed change number three, the use declaration removal. So do you want to just do it?
Yeah, thanks. This did not come from a zoning interpretation, but there were, I, I think most of the commissioners will remember a couple of months ago, there was an application to have illegal sheds deemed illegal just because no one complained about them, uh, in five years. I can't think of a, any circumstance where staff would support something like that, where something was built illegally and just because it was never called about or discovered, then it's able to be deemed legal. Um, in addition to that, it, it tiptoes into the variance, um, realm, which is managed by a whole different state regulated process and a different hearing body. So we're recommending this whole, uh, ordinance section just be removed.
Any questions or feedback for Mike? Okay. You got an easy one, I guess. Okay, proposed change number four, carports. We talked a little bit about this in the last meeting. Um, right now, city code has a definition for carport. It's what's listed here. I think everyone can see what I'm highlighting. Yep. With the exception of right now, it doesn't say residential. Um, so it gives this really general definition, and then it doesn't follow up with any like development standards or really like regulations for where they need to be. So it's, again, we've always just used the accessory structure for detached and the main structure for attached carports, and it's been fine, but it's a point of confusion. So what we're proposing is that in Title Nineteen, this is the only title affected by this. Um, in the definition section, we specify that the existing definition for carport, a structure that is open on a minimum of two sides and designed or used to shelter not more than three vehicles and not to exceed twenty-four feet on its longest dimension, also called covered parking area, be updated as carport comma residential. And then we add a subsequent definition for a carport comma non-residential that specifies a structure that is open on a minimum of two sides and is designed or used to shelter vehicles. A minimum length of twenty feet and a maximum width of ten feet is required for every parking space being covered by the carport. Um, this language comes specifically from a zoning interpretation that was done, so we used it as a foundation for this. So we're proposing those modifications to definitions, and then this verbiage added to chapter nineteen point seven six, which is kind of our supplementary structural information. So it would specify really what we just talked about related to yard elements. Um, residential carports are just subject to the same height, setback placement, and lot coverage standards for either attached or accessory structures, depending on if it's attached or detached. Um, and then for non-residential carports, we're proposing a little bit more flexibility just because sometimes with larger non-residential sites, the configuration may not be that like prototypical residential lot. It might be kind of more of a communal space with multifamily projects or commercial. So we are saying that they should be architecturally similar to the primary structure on the property. Um, not more than twenty feet in height. Uh, those that are attached to a non-residential building shall maintain the same setbacks for that building. Those that are detached shall, um, maintain the following setbacks. So option one, if adjacent land is zoned commercial, non-residential, the non-residential carport shall be located in the rear of the primary buildings, at least six feet away from the primary building, and shall maintain a minimum setback of three feet. If the adjacent land is zone residential, a non-residential carport shall be located in the rear, at least six feet away, and the same setbacks that are required by that adjacent residential zone. Any non-residential carport located near than five feet must be fire-rated construction. And detached non-residential carports can be permitted in the side or front yard if they're approved by the ARC following demonstration that the applicant, by the applicant, that this configuration serves the design guidelines. So just tried to add that little bit of flexibility for a project that incorporates that as part of its design. Um, and then finally, this last part just scoots down the next sections by a letter and then takes out this carport language that was directly conflicting. It said canopies not including carports um, don't have to meet setbacks. And then it said accessory buildings including carports don't have to meet setbacks. So this one's a longer one, and it has a lot in it, so we can take our time a little bit more if we need. Um, let me know your feedback or questions.
In residential, is a carport different in any way from a garage?
Um, it would be. It would have to be open on a minimum of two sides.
But, but in terms of its standards, whether it was open on two sides or four sides, it's all the same zone.
Yeah, all the same like
zoning.
uh, design standards for setbacks and everything. Yeah. It's just defined differently in here. So functionally, maybe not. I don't know if from building code, that's an important distinction where maybe it's called out as a separate thing because the construction standards for it are different. Okay, I'm gonna keep scrolling. Okay, ordinary projections. This is also one that we talked a little bit about or referenced in the last one. So right now, um, you'll, you'll recognize this section from what I also just talked about with carports. This section, um, the, the verbiage is a little bit confusing, but basically what it's saying is everything, every structure has to meet setbacks except for this shortlist. And then it says fences. It has the language about carports that we just talked about removing. And then it says the ordinary projections of windows where the projection is at least eighteen inches above floor level. Um, and it currently then says roofs, cornices, chimneys, flues, and other ornamental features which project into a yard not more than three feet. So this provision has historically been used to allow like a roof overhang. The, the wall of the house meets setbacks and the roof line is allowed to overhang three feet into the setback. That's very standard. Um, it's also allowed these more ornamental things like cornices, chimneys, flues. Um, but it's a little bit unclear just with what that can mean. Um, because it also says other ornamental features, and that's very vague. So we've proposed again, removing the language that's conflicting about carports, um, adding in awnings, parapets, and relief carvings, and then just defining what ornamental features are. So we've tried to define them as those design elements which serve as an ornament or decoration to the outside of a building. Areas with usable square footage such as stairwells, decks, cantilevered rooms, bay windows, et cetera, do not qualify and must meet the setback requirements outlined in the underling zone. Um, so the intent of this code is to allow for a little bit more flexibility with just those design elements, not necessarily like the livable space.
So a couple of things, as we talked about, um, that under nineteen point zero four, the definition there of ornamental, adding that it's attached
Sure.
to the, to the building. And then if you scroll down a little bit further.
This gets into non-conform.
No, no, it's gotta be. There were two places where there was this definition that's in number two.
Number two.
The, where you added in the red awning.
Oh, this is number two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that also somewhere else? Because I wrote in my notes that it was not incorporated into somewhere else.
Oh, we can definitely check. I'm not aware of it being in two places, but, um, what it might have been is that the same thing was included in carports right here. Um, in the last one we went through, I just didn't make the change to this one yet because we hadn't hit it in the staff report.
Okay.
So that may be what you read.
Maybe that's, yeah.
There's some overlapping sections where multiple changes affect it, so it's a little bit confusing to know how to present that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on ordinary projections or ornamental features? Can anyone, is there any other like ornamental things that you think would apply here that we'd want to build flexibility in for? I, I think because we we have ornamental features as a definition, there's some good flexibility. Honestly, usually it's just roof lines that people want to do, but um, okay, great. Okay, non-conforming uses. So right now, the city's non-conforming use process says that a legal non-conforming building, so this is again a building which was considered legal at the time it was constructed, but no longer complies with the city's current standards. Um, these legal non-conforming buildings can be modified through a certain process outlined in code. The language is specific to a building, so it doesn't say anything about sites or other types of structures. Historically, we've just used building to also mean sites and structures. So for an example, we just received an application by Target to modify existing outdoor lighting. The existing outdoor lighting was legally non-conforming, but it wasn't a building with a light post. So there was a question of, does this still apply? Um, under, with support from the appeals hearing officer, we still used it and it was approved, but we thought it would be good to just formally clarify that. So we've left the procedure untouched, um, and just specified that it is applicable for, that, that anyone can apply for it. You know, I'm entitled to approval, but you can apply for it for a legal non-conforming building, site, or structure. And structure would be like an outdoor lighting post. Um, site would be a little bit more flexible, but we just wanted to open up that procedure a little bit more clearly. So um, any other questions or questions at all on this one? Okay. Uh, oh, I think.
Just wait, I do have.
Okay.
Now, you know me.
I know you. You go ahead.
Um, so the fact that we deleted that section about not looking about the non-conforming does not, this is talking about making changes, not about approving, approving non-conforming. And so I, I initially it was, it was a little bit conflicting in my mind, but I, I mean, okay, it makes sense.
Yeah, this would be like if I, um, let's say just, this is totally not factual, but let's say Sully County let me build a building one foot from the property line when I built it in nineteen seventy-two. Um, now it's twenty twenty-three. That doesn't meet the standard, but it was legal when I did it. And I want to put a new roof on it, or I want to make it a little bit bigger on the other side. It's not even by the property line. Um, I would be able to go through this process, and that's always been very clear for buildings. But again, development is not limited just to buildings, and so it's been a little bit inflexible with some of those other slight things.
Perfect.
Okay, I think this is our last one. This one's kind of a, I don't know, whimsical one. So city code has a definition today for indoor animal kennels. Um, but it doesn't specify anywhere where these are allowed. So it gives a definition. Says this is what an indoor animal kennel is, but then none of the zones list it as an allowed use. So that's been problematic. Um, historically, we have allowed it as a conditional use in the zones that allow daycares and preschools because the impact both for parking and potential nuisances is actually pretty similar. So kind of a funny interpretation. Um, for all those pet parents out there, I'm sure they'd agree, but that's how we've done it. But it's, it not a permanent fix. So what we're proposing is basically just formalization of that where we've added indoor animal kennel as a conditional use, so we'd have to run through a conditional use review process for the impact um, to the neighborhood commercial and regional commercial zones. It, in practice, had also been allowed in the mixed-use zone because that zone allows daycares and preschools, but just looking at the city's long-range goals for the mixed-use zone, we felt like that wasn't really consistent. So we're not recommending codifying it in that code here. Um, and then the other rate, red line you see here or change is just making the language consistent on how daycares and preschools are typed. So in one of the zones, um, there was a separate thing for child or adult daycare facilities, and then uh, daycares and preschools, childcare, daycare, and preschool. And then here it was listed as nursery schools, so we've just tried to clean that up.
So on the, on the kennels ones, um, do we need to define that it's daycare versus no overnight?
Yeah, I think it may already.
Does it? Okay, I, I didn't see it, and so.
I should have included it in there. That's my bad.
Oh, somewhere, it's somewhere defined somewhere else, maybe.
I'll look it up.
I'll look it up soon.
I got it right here.
I mean, if it's there, we don't need to see. I, I mean, I was just, I was just thinking.
Oh, I'm not sharing that right screen. Let me read it to you. It says. Indoor kennels, an establishment with indoor pens in which more than four dogs or domesticated animals are housed, groomed, bred, boarded and trained. So it actually does say it could be boarded.
So they can't let the dogs out into the backyard to. Do what they need to.
Um, there's a separate one right now for outdoor. It's the same thing, but it says with outdoor pens. So I think that raises a good point of, do we want to look at like merging those two? Cause I think. You probably would want to have outdoor space if you were doing a dog boarding situation, but.
I mean, you have to, I mean, there has to be somewhere during that.
Open to feedback. It looks like.
Yeah, where, where's the outdoor dog spaces allowed?
It's also not called out.
Okay.
So we could just do it all as one.
Cause I, I do have some concern with that just being. You, you know, indoor, outdoor, you can't. Confine a whole bunch of dogs indoors. They're going to have to go outdoors. So. In neighborhood commercial, I'm not sure if it would make more sense to put this more into a commercial zoning space. Um, just because I think there is more impact than, you know, what a daycare would be providing.
Yeah, that's, that's totally fair. If the commission sees it as a use that's most appropriate in regional commercial. I think that's a good discussion to have. Um, the existing interpretation was only related to indoor ones, but I think it's good to contemplate. How those might actually be kind of one in the same. I don't know if any indoor boarding kennel would actually have no outdoor space. So. Um, what does the rest of the commissioner staff feel about that?
There are also conditional uses, which would mean any of them need to come through planning commission. So. What we've done in the past, because the commission has seen these in the past, is they've proposed outdoor spaces and the commission has said, oh, this proposes. Some concerns, you need to mitigate it, build a taller fence, move it away from. Adjacent neighbors. So the commission would have a role in reviewing. You know, the setup of an, uh, any outdoor element of a kennel.
What is the maximum size again? How many dogs?
Um, let me pull that definition up again. I think it's, it says for. Which more than four doesn't give a cap. We could also add that as part of. Um, your purview.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, so I mean, it's essentially like, you know, just because we don't. Nobody wants that house, right? That's all around.
Yeah.
So the four min, the minimum, now, now you're kicking into regulation and that's the only purpose, right? So having needed a doggy boarding service before, I, I didn't find any in, in the city. And this is something, you know, the, the, that, um, you know, people drop their dogs off at work. And, and generally speaking, the, the issue of. Like an, uh, like trading the dog at night. I mean, it's not like dogs are just let run free all night if they're boarding. So I, I mean, I think this whole, the issue of, if there's a worry, right? This is the neighborhood. The dogs get to run free. Um, that's, I don't, in my experience and with a, a company that's doing, getting a kennel. Um, they are taking care of dogs like they're children, human children. So I think that whole issue is so long as it comes through our commission, I wouldn't see any need to. Provide additional. Guidelines because it would come through that review process.
That's good feedback as well.
Do you feel like it'd be worthwhile to look at more of the regional commercial space versus neighborhood commercial? Just because the neighborhood.
What the map looks like.
Let me pull up the map. I think that would be actually really helpful. So I'm gonna just temporarily stop sharing my screen and pull up the zoning map.
Cause neighborhood commercial, I think. Has different impact than regional commercial would have.
It would be a conditional use in both. So again, it would run through that impact analysis where the condition, the commission could impose reasonable conditions to mitigate that. So there, there is that safeguard, but, um. I think this is a good discussion to have and, and ultimately we felt like it, it wasn't a fit for mixed use. So we pulled it from that. Um.
I think an example could be like the, the Smiths complex is neighborhood commercial. And I think as a commission, you'd be, say something came in there and if, if it were proposed right adjacent to the houses behind it, you may look at that differently than if it were. Way up on the, the intersection of thirty-five hundred and Bengal, the impacts are different. Which is why we're recommending it's a conditional use because it does give you that ability to look at the context of it.
Okay, folks. So this is the zoning map. Um. I don't think the layers are gonna super, I'm trying to make this visible. The pink, this bright like bubblegum pink color. This is all public information too. So I'm not like exposing anyone's details. This is publicly available. Um, is neighborhood commercial. So we see neighborhood commercial currently along part of Port Union. Um, and the red is regional commercial. So we've got the Union Park area. Um, the purple is office research and development. That's not something we're proposing putting it in, although.
Are, are you proposing putting it in neighborhood commercial or regional commercial?
So right now it's proposed in both.
Okay.
That's what's been. Interpreted historically. Um, but. But yeah, that's the conversation here. So the pink.
I assume neighborhood commercials just from a, from a square footage is much, much less citywide.
Um, so, oh, neighborhood commercial, yeah, it's probably like less available total square footage of properties, but.
Yeah, but it's almost all. In the residential.
Yep.
It used to be residential.
Yeah, it does.
Much of it anyway.
A little bit more. And that's why in the neighborhood commercial zone. Um, sorry, there's like so many overlapping windows right here in the neighborhood commercial zone. Oh, man, it's not, it's like not tracking what I'm getting, but. All of the uses are conditional. So because of that impact or that interface with, um. Residential properties. So. There's no, literally the thing read, the code reads, there's no permitted uses in the neighborhood commercial zone because they are all considered conditional.
Could you show the zoning for Creek Road?
Yeah, definitely. So let's. It'll take a minute to catch up. There's a lot of data on this map and so it just sometimes needs a minute to catch its breath.
What is the bright green?
Um, the bright green is rural residential. I think it's our, our one twenty-one.
So the existing, I think I know where you're going. The existing veterinary clinic down there is a, is a grandfathered use from Salt Lake County. It's in a residential zone.
Oh, yeah, you're probably looking right over here.
I, I think based on. The magnitude of. The, the regional commercial, I think it'd make more sense to put it in that just because. You know, there's just a, a lot less neighborhood commercial. And I think that the uses that are currently in place on it are. Pretty worthwhile to contribute to the community and. Not have as much, um. Borders, I guess you would say, if it comes into the conditional use permit process.
I will say we have gotten a lot of questions from potential boarding. Um, or kennel companies wanting to be in the neighborhood commercial zone. So there is a lot of interest in those smaller properties, I think maybe from like a rent standpoint of the larger properties maybe being more expensive. I don't know if that impacts the commission's decision. Again, staff's recommendation is that it's allowed there conditionally, but the commission can take it to a vote. Absolutely.
I, I think there's a difference too between daycare kennels and the, and overnight boarding. Um, I, I just think there's a, there's a difference there typically with the overnight boarding, at least the smaller ones. There is not staff. There aren't people there. I mean, the dogs are in their respective, um. Pens or something. Man, I, I just think from a noise perspective too, um, we've got to look at, I think the day. I mean, daycare ones are gonna be noisy too. For sure. But the, I, I just, I think we need to define them maybe differently. And I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you as to where and. Zoning.
I agree as well, but I, I think another major difference between the daycares and these is the daycares have an upper limit.
Oh, of children.
That's defined not only by our code, but by the state.
Sure, yeah.
And here you have no upper limit and that seems problematic.
Would it make any sense?
We, uh, to.
You know, with Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Chapel, I mean, we, we do need these kind of services, but. It, it may be kind of like an Airbnb type of an issue. There's a service called Rover where somebody who's just already got a dog and. Wants one more dog to play with their dog. That, that's such a different look than, you know, I, I wanna, I wanna take care of twenty dogs. On my residential property. So, and, and I, I completely concur with, uh, Commissioner Shelton that. It, because there's not a natural limit because of, uh. Uh, state, state laws, I do think that we may need to put a few more guidelines in. Not for the sake of prohibiting, but just giving people guidelines. So if you, if you're not on this type of property. There, there may be an upper limit or some kind of guidance, whether you're doing it just, just for the day. Or what, what you need, exactly what you need to go overnight with a larger number of animals.
One metric the commission could consider is maybe like a ratio of like dogs to square footage or dogs to employees. Um, to put it in that way, because I do think having some flexibility in maybe the amount allowed. Could be helpful. Um, but yeah, these are all valid options, viable options. If you want to define the daycare differently than the overnight. Um, if you wanna to look at. You know, doing it just in the regional commercial zone, I think. It's, it's a good discussion to have.
So that, that business would require a business license.
Yeah, so it would require a business license and a conditional use permit. Is how it's been done so far and what we're recommending.
I just did a quick search and it does look like, you know, there, there's places where they're listing different cities. It does look like some cities have a cap on the number. Um, I don't think I'd be opposed to that. I, I do think though, right now. With it being a conditional use permit, I think the process is there. To weed out appropriate and inappropriate application in these, in these readings.
But how would we ever define that though? I mean, yeah. Uh, if we're, if we're thinking of setting a cap, I don't, how would we know?
We'd be happy to look into it and come back if it's more discussion. We definitely.
I, I'm not, I mean, I, I just don't want it to very, be very vague.
Yeah.
For an applicant. Yeah.
Definitely. Agree that. The conditional use process is a great opportunity to do conditions, but I think there's definitely something to be said for letting people know upfront what the cap is. So if they're even looking into it. They know. Um, so definitely don't want to rush anything. If this one would benefit some additional, um. Just like research from what other caps are, we are happy to do that and bring it back. We have. Plenty more of these to come. We can tack this one on too.
I know there are other, other. Pets that have caps too. You can only have a certain number of snakes.
Snakes, yeah.
Well, sure. Yeah, this one just says indoor animals. So I guess snakes would be like an option.
I would suggest then that we. If everything else is okay, we still move forward with everything else. And then we can just carve out, set aside. The, the animal kennel situation rather than hold all of this up.
Yeah, that would be.
Bring that back.
Be my recommendation as well. And I'll just mention a quick procedural note. Um. This as a zoning text amendment, even though it's a city initiated one and not a private developer. Still follows the same process of going to the city council. So any action on that tonight would be a recommendation to the city council, either for approval or denial. Um. And then the city council would make the final legislative change. So if you do make a motion. To recommend approval, you could just do it with the exception of the animal kennel item that's tabled for future discussion. Um. But yeah, I think this has been really helpful. Any other comments or questions on this one? Okay, I think. I'm gonna just scroll back to this first page. Um. Let me see if I can get. Zoomed out a little bit so you can see the model motions if you need them. Um, and I'll just kind of take a backseat here and turn it over to you, um, Commissioner Mills.
Okay, does, does anybody, uh? Say, buddy, put a pencil to, uh. Possibly a model motion with the modifications, taking out the. The dog component that we're discussing. Anybody want to take a stab at it?
Sure, um, I moved that we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for projects ETA twenty-three dash zero zero one, based on the findings listed in the staff memo and attachments stated April nineteenth. Twenty twenty-three, subject to the condition, um, of the, uh, removal of the dog kennel, um, section or item. For, for future consideration.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do you have a second?
I would second that motion.
Actually, I have a quick question. That, we talked about a couple of other changes to like some definitions and those kinds of things. Do we need to mention that those also would be incorporated into? In, into the, yeah, into what we're recommending moves forward.
I would.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't on the mic. It would be helpful if you would reference them. I mean, we can always go back in the minutes, but if you do remember the changes you wanted. That's helpful for us to, to just jot those down all in one place.
So Commissioner Anderson, if you, we, right now, we've got a motion on the table and we had. Um. So, uh, at this point, what's in order is, uh, discussion of the motion on the table. Uh, I mean, I guess what you could do is you can make a friendly amendment if you had edits and approach, uh, Commissioner Evler about that. Do you have any edits, Commissioner Anderson?
The only one I could think of is the definition to ornamental. Uh, uh, it's the only one I wrote down if anyone.
I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly, uh, to, to amend my, um, motion.
It does seem like we had several along the way that we were in agreement on.
There was entrance of outlet. I did look that up. Outlet, it's all defined in the state code that's referenced there. So I think it's all covered. Outlet is just a retail licensee. So an outlet is just a, a, an establishment. The entrance is, is the entrance. And then in state code, it, it always references the patron entrance. And that's where all the measurements are taken from. So I'm comfortable with the language as it is because of the state code reference.
So Commissioner Shelton and Commissioner Smith, you wanna, do you want to specifically add those? Or do you want a reference to the state code in our motion? Or are you comfortable with what staff has shared?
I don't think we need to mention.
No, I don't think so either. But if, if there were others that we agreed on, it would be nice if we captured them and.
Sorry, I keep unmuting. If it's agreeable to the, to those who motioned and seconded the motion on the table, can we do a quick scroll through just to make sure?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so we talked about entrance of outlets, paved surface. Um, I think we landed on that being okay with you guys. Um, that's all this one use declaration. We went through that. Carports, remind me if. I know we had a lot of discussion on this one. I think we landed on this being fine. Um. Ordinary projections, we talked about adding to the definition of ornamental feature that it's attached to a building. Um, non-conforming uses.
So I believe the, the other item was, was back on item for. For yard amendments to make the definite. Parallel, right? Because you had added on item. Um. All right.
Oh, on the next one.
Two, the awnings, parapets and relief carvings. And I, that has not yet been added back on.
Yes.
That.
And that would just be done by our city attorney with the final version. So I don't, I don't think it needs to be formally stated. Um, but you're welcome to if you, if you'd like to, but. We would make sure it's reflected.
Then I'm, I'm happy.
Okay. Um, non-conforming uses and then we.
Was there some, Sam, was there something on side yards versus rear yards on this?
On, sorry, on which one?
Um. Or was it just in the work session?
That was the work session. That's coming in the future.
Okay.
It's, I'm impressed that you guys have kept it as separated as you have because it's been a lot of overlap. You guys have done a really good job. Um. Okay. Everyone feeling good?
Any, any other clarifications going back with, we're, so we had a motion, a second. And then, uh, Commissioner Anderson just wanted a clarification on the definitions and Commissioner Shelton Smith. Raised concerns and, uh. Is, does anyone want to make any friendly amendments to the current motion?
So, so I, I accepted the, the, the friendly from Commissioner Anderson. I think Commissioner Chapel, if you made the second, you have to accept it as well.
Uh, yeah, accepted.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on the, on the motion?
Do we want a catchphrase, um, or just kind of a catch condition of if there's any additional ministerial changes that were discussed and agreed to? Within the minutes that they would be incorporated. With the recommendation? Or is that overkill?
That, I think that would happen just as, as the city attorney prepares this. He, he always makes those little changes. So I think we're covered.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Please.
Okay, um, let's see, uh.
Let me stop sharing so you can see the full group again a little bit better.
Okay, that's okay. Uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Chapel.
Yes.
Commissioner Evler.
Hi.
Commissioner Shelton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Steinman.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mills is a yes. Okay, uh, we'll go on to the next item. Which I believe is, uh, that we pulled off of consents. It was a minutes from our previous meeting. Um, do we want to put those on the screen? With the, with the edits, just for the sake of the.
Let me pull that up. I just relocated back to the bench here. Um. I can pull up the minutes. They don't have the highlights I made on my copy that I shared in the work session.
Okay.
But I think you can reference that in a motion if you're comfortable with that.
So I moved that we approved the minutes with the changes that were referenced in our work session.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have the second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, we, we're gonna presume that for the sake of the public, that those will be. Published and we as a commissioner comfortable with what we're voting on based on what we discussed in the work session. Uh. Is, is there uh, anybody need to clarify anything or any other questions of, of staff regarding the edits that Sam referenced? Okay, hearing none. Um, I, I think we'll call a question. Um. I think we can do this with a voice vote. All those in, in favor of approval of the minutes for March eighth, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And I believe with that, we only have one more item of business.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We need adjournments. Thanks to everybody for your help tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for chairing remotely. Um, our next meeting will be held on May third. That's back to our just one meeting per month because we're out of the quarter. So back to normal. Um, that one, I'll just preface, we'll have kind of a different work session. Our consultant for the form-based code that we're working on will be attending that session to introduce that to the commission. So. Um, we hope that you'll join us for that and give some preliminary feedback. And thank you for being here tonight.
Sam, will that be, um, will that be published to the, to the public?
Yeah, it will be. It'll look just kind of the same way this does here where it's in work session and it'll just be an item on there. Um, there won't be a notice that goes out because it's not a business item, but it will be published on the agenda, which is public facing.
I actually do have one more question. Um, are we also electing new chair?
We're gonna do that. So Commissioner Allen's gone the next two meetings, but he, he will be here the first June meeting and we'll do it that night.
Do it then. Okay, thanks.
Um, Commissioner Mills, did that answer your question about public information?
That, that did. I, I really hope that we um, we engage the public early on this one. I think there will be a lot of interest and enthusiasm and it would be nice. I think because we'll eventually get to the city council that we start the discussion and. I think at, at some points it will probably get lively. So I would, I'd love for us to engage as much as we can. Early. So let's make sure we, we just, every time somebody says, oh, if I'd only known that we were going to be discussing this with the planning commission, I would have come, you know, so. Whatever, whatever venues you think are appropriate, let's uh, make sure we spread the word.
Sounds good.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Night.
Yeah.